Good evening. Thank you to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of Texas. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. I would like to add, under the President's plan, for approval of the middle of the 2015-2019 consolidated plan, annual tax plan. Okay, I have a motion to add item, and we have to add item six A. Do I hear a second to that? Second. Probably motion second for consideration of item added to this middle of 2015-2019 compact plan and action plan. Are there any questions? If they're in the office, please raise your right hand. My motion is clear, if I say that will be item six A.
And I have two more items. Under my items, I would like to give the update on the same joint for pursuit of conditions. Item ten and item fourteen, discussion of the city of Brunswick funding to repair on Mansfield Street. And I would like those to go before item number five. That is considering approval of authorized and the mayor's sign of this award and contract to Mansfield Street. That's what we're going to take.
I'll tell you one, Commissioner, how about if we just add your items, ten, all your items, and I really have to try to pick and choose. Would that be good for you?
Well, I would prefer to do five, uh...
Ten and...
Ten and fourteen, and then a five.
Okay, that's how I want to say you want to do that. Well, Commissioner, your communication is over, or is motion, I have a second for that. Second. All right, probably motion second that we consider item ten and item fourteen to move and extend it, then to be considered, be considered, uh, before item number five. I think that's basically to give us some information before we decide to, uh, report on that. Any further discussion on that? And, uh, Mr. Teller, please keep me on track of that.
Further discussion?
All those who may have raised your right hand. Okay, we're going to do that with... I'm taking item number ten and I'm going to see this four. Uh, item five. Okay. Um, as we open up our meeting for recognition and presentations and awards, first of all, I would like to recognize, um, uh, someone who, uh, organization that's very prevalent and very committed and supportive in our community. That is the organization of Bel Air Federal Federal Sorority and Kings. And I would like to recognize those young ladies. Please thank them. Uh, you know, this sorority is a nonprofit organization purpose to provide assistance and support to establish program in local community throughout the world. Since its founding, more than two-hundred thousand women have joined this sorority. They are, they are extremely good and predominantly black, solid educated women. This sorority currently has over one thousand collegiate alumni chapters located nationally and internationally. Let's give them all a hand, Mitch. I want to thank also, uh, they gave our location, which was really, really good. Thank you so very much. Item number one, Garrett Pauls, director of Coastal Business Institute, to give an update on the Siege Prosperity Summit. Mr. Pauls, please come forward.
Here. Good evening, Mayor, are you distinguishing commissioners? As you all know, in January, City did a proclamation, Siege Prosperity. The week of July twelfth through the eighteenth, Siege Prosperity in the city of Brunswick. And I wanted to give an update with the tremendous progress on that. We're about ten weeks out, and I wanted opportune time to come in and share with you just where we are, so that everyone can get as excited with this program as I myself can. Now, what you all have is the what. You have content that is on our website, and we've left some fresh flyers for them to take upstairs. Those in attendance can have possession upon their departure. But you have the content, what I'm going to share with you here briefly is the how. So it says, "The following activities have been implemented to accomplish our desired goals, which are, we want to have a minimum of twenty-five exhibitors. And for those who don't know, this is going to be held at the Jet Valley Club Hotel in Morgan Conference Center. We want to have a level of twenty-five exhibitors, which we're almost there. We want to have five major sponsors, which we have three on board. We are anticipating a minimum of three hundred people per day in attendance over the three-day period. In March, we designed a website. Through March first of February, we received almost eight thousand hits. We've got seven thousand nine hundred and fifty hits on the website that were generated through Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn. And we anticipate that by July twelfth, we will have at least fifteen thousand hits. That means fifteen thousand precious people who don't know of Brunswick, know now and Siege Prosperity event. Uh, on April fourteenth, we conducted a biker's rally table, where we invited the Georgia Department of Community Affairs coming up to Brunswick. So they presented the state's small business credit initiative in the central courtroom. We had a room with fifteen local bikes and two credit units in attendance. The state of Georgia provided, was granted forty million dollars from Congress to make available to area bikes. At this point, there are ongoing talks and training programs educating our local biking industry to take advantage of these resources. Because of the state's small business credit initiative, local bikes will be able to make loans to startup and micro-business operators while minimizing the bike risk and exposure. And Mayor Harvey and Commissioner Mark, you guys, you all went up to Macon and took the delegation to Macon. So these funds became available at that point in time, and we were able to convince those guys to DC to come down and share with our community, uh, with your side and myself, and we had a really good event. So that's moving forward. Uh, in addition to the bike funding that is available to the startup and micro businesses, we've arranged for the FDIC to come to Brunswick and speak with our nonprofit and community organizations directly concerning the Community Investment Act. The CRA funding programs, the FDIC will conduct training programs informing our community-based organizations on how to apply for local bikes, to local bikes, and receive grants for funding for projects that require no repayment and no interest, still in profit, donations, and investments. This is going to be limited to the first twenty-five certified five-year-old senior organizations that can come in and receive FDIC and the bikes, and they can make our patient, and many of them will be funded right there. We have a member from the USDA, from HUD, from the US Treasury Department, and other major real estate developers, financing sources, mortgage company, and insurance company that will be conducting residential and commercial real estate training workshops and seminars for those who are active or seeking to become active in the real estate. The US Small Business Administration is conducting an exclusive video presentation sharing why the state of Georgia was selected number one for business and opportunities within the nation. It is well-known that the Golden Isles is poised to become a very, very desirable environment to conduct business. And the SBA is going to share all those specific points pertaining to that. The Georgia Home-Based Business Chamber of Commerce will be here to provide information on how to start and successfully maintain a home-based business for those who desire to do so. There will be numerous business opportunities provided ranging from legal shield, American mathematics, violin, athletic, and other national trends offering proven systems that area residents can participate with. And partly, the state of Georgia, with the Department of Economic Government and the Department of Labor, will be here to implement a major job fair to include resume preparation, interviewing skills, consulting workshops, and training materials. All of what we mentioned here is free to the public, and everyone who chooses is allowed to participate. As we go closer to begin a major advertising campaign including local billboards, newspapers, magazine ads, radio, and increased online presentation. What we need at this point is from the city, is to assist with coordinating a meeting between local stakeholders to include the Outlaw Level III, Lincoln, Chamber of Commerce, State Simon, and Jet Island III. We want to bring all of the stakeholders to the table, so that if we all feel on the same page, we can produce a very successful event. So with that, I say thank you for your support, and we'll go to any questions.
Question for Mr. Pauls? Uh, I've been, thank you, Mr. Pauls, for giving an update on this summit. Uh, I'm sure it's going to be successful. Just hearing what you gave us, I really know that we're moving forward. So thank you so very much. Okay, item number two, the public hearing, land use. Uh, various petition number fifteen oh two from Robert Boone, or various to allow significant modification to the billboard sign that's located at the five-hundred Derry Highway. Mr. Lazer, please present.
Good evening to you all. This is for a couple of variances for billboard structure. And you'll see on page one of the staff report, the outbound subject parcel of this third five-hundred Derry Highway. Mr. Boone bought a piece of property somewhat recently. There are no structures on it, no residences, no buildings, the only structure that's on it is a billboard. As you can see on page two. And after the new purchase, Mr. Boone would like to remove that billboard that's currently there and put a replacement that you see, or similar to what you see at the bottom of page two. Um, the existing billboard is a single-phase billboard, not terribly tall. The, it's a proposed replacement, it'll be thirty-five feet in height, and it'll be a two-footed billboard, which means it'd be changed with that two faces. Want to take a look at it from south. The billboard structure is owned by the Department of Public Utilities. And Mr. Boone would like to remove that old structure and improve it, because he's not able to with the old structure that he's in. The proposal, thirty-five feet in height, two-footed billboard, requires a couple of sections of the zoning ordinance as the existing zoning ordinance, and that's why the variances are being requested. First of all, the existing board is in non-formal grandfather structure. So grandfather's not informing, uses cannot be extended or enlarged according to three different sections of the zoning ordinance. So there are not informed conditions there. There are also separation requirements for billboards. Traditional billboards have to be one thousand two hundred and fifty feet separation from other traditional billboards. Currently, there's no billboard that's only three hundred and sixty feet away. There's also separation, this is three hundred feet to property of the zone, residential, and to property of the zone, conservation, preservation. Current billboard is approximately a hundred feet from our island zone property, approximately twenty-two feet from conservation, reservation. There are also separation requirements in the temporary design out, temporary design out, which is what we're having. Uh, the last piece that I would like to bring, uh, or as to, um, points. Maybe we have variance criteria, and they're all listed on bottom of page three. Staff's opinion, if we request a variance, it's not meeting any of those criteria. And Seth doesn't believe that if we leave this brand, it is basically caused detriment of a good prepared purposes in that point. The claim hardship simply doesn't meet the series three variance criteria. And in the comprehensive plan, for the highway seventeen character area, it simply says to ban any new billboards on the court and require that old billboards be removed as additional new development or redevelopment permitting. So clearly, the direction is to minimize the reports, cannot allow larger building, additional installation. Staff therefore recommends against bringing the request of billboard variances, but proposed double-faced billboard construction with the following three reasons. First, that the subject parcels are ready and not informing with respect to existing billboard, and not informing cannot be expanded. Number two, the Outlaw is not all hardship, it's defined with the zoning ordinance. Number three, the city's comp plan dictates that the overall presence of billboards be finished on, whenever it cannot expand, that's how we request. I have not had any input assignments in place, had a paper, had phone calls, but had any input from the phone call.
Any question for Mr. Lazer?
Yeah, I would like to know, the new owners will lay in, or may I always say?
Other than the numbers we've known of?
Well, the neighbor, two people, the neighbor is directly behind the flag.
Property that's immediately further to the east, also owned by, on the property to the south, I'm not sure. I could go back to the computer and look it up.
I didn't claim development today, Eric.
What, claim development is a claim development district or?
Claim development for, um, Boone property.
He is not, he is not come forward with any other other code that I would, he's not expressed further development property.
Also, does, does this property extend into, uh, Manhattan, how is that, or temporary guy? Is he within that, that issue, out guy, I mean, section, Jeff Riley, Commissioner?
I can talk to you, because this is actually in the city?
Yes, it is.
According to the study that we have on highway seventeen, the city starts up by eleven feet on.
Yeah, but it's south of this. I think it's over there.
The side on the west side of seventeen, they could come out.
I mean, odd thing is, if it's further north, the Palmetto Forest, that billboard that's just north of Palmetto Forest, if it comes south, that's actually the first piece of property that's in the city. And then it kind of skips a rail a little bit. So it's, it's odd, I would go with that.
We do as well our property, and that's what we need. So we need to, uh, get back on that, back on our, our part of this.
This is where it's on the city, uh, and it's in county.
Okay, just jumping around here, really, Tom. It's my opinion, that's part of what we should have been available, conflict, and then law, and then education. We do not get that law.
Well, I kind of agree with you. I think the next law will get there.
The billboard.
Yes. Any more questions for Mr. Lazer? Is Mr. Boone here?
Yes, he is.
I appreciate you talking, looking at the list and giving. To answer Mr. Williams', uh, question, half of that property was in the city and half of it was in the county. And, but it's one piece of property. So the county has told me that I can put it in the county in about seven or two. And, and I believe that the city, I can put it all in the city if I want to. And while the broker was on, I didn't do one or the other, I did another because, and we had none of it over. I showed more, we're going to do with property part of, is owned by multi-family and part of some commercial. And we're trying to keep the whole piece of property together, just like it sits, until we decide what to do with it. And I know there's a lot of things to ask for, but the sign is already there. And it's been there, it doesn't meet the distance requirement from the other signs, but that's not our fault, because that sign was there first. So these signs come after that, and that sign was put there out in the spur of the moment. And so Lamar, they have a tendency to not leave it with you. And, and I would like to have a sign there, and I'd like to bring it up to date and make it like the other signs on the corridor. And according to the, to the, uh, the detriment or good of the public, I don't see where that would be a problem, because I signed a pen there something years. And the fact that they put a sign out there and advertised it, and nobody's talking about this situation about it, believe you, believe you, believe that that sign doesn't seem bothering you. So I thought I'd be able to consider some of those things, and, and, uh, and help you with this if you can. Thank you.
Okay, question, any more questions?
You have acres, do you own the land?
There's about seven acres behind me, a good bit of marsh.
So you own, you own the land around the town?
Yes, sir.
You have, you have difference on anything, if you keep gathering, do you know the background?
I, I can change right now, the previous one of that is only family in the back on the marsh, like parts. And on the front side, where everybody, uh, um, this is an attorney's office, man with a truck building. That's a zone of power of commercial. Any more questions?
And your intent, or you say you can keep that together, if you don't know exactly how you want to zonage? Do you have the?
Well, we're willing to work the, the, uh, multi-family, uh, then we also wants the commercial. But that is right, they don't have a set of any, and I do have access to that there. So I, I hate to take that off the table, and I don't want to mislead anybody, but I, I don't know the answer tonight.
Okay, is that more than the city that you do that on, or is it in the county?
The sign is in the city.
But the property is in the county?
No, sir. No, sir, I, I think the multi-family, most of it is in the city. That's something I like that, and most of the commercial in the county.
So if you develop it, what would you do with the sign?
What would I do with the sign? Well, I've got a lot to shoot to cut them a perpetual easement out right there for where the sign is going to be. And so no matter what I've done with that, I still have access to the sign to maintain it, as we plan on doing.
But I love with the, with the, with the, I think with the fact that it is, if you develop that, it's really going to be a problem with the sign. I think that's what, according to our, our zoning, uh, I think it'd be a problem. But right now, it's a problem because it's too close to, uh, uh, our city, which is, uh, what is our city?
Presidential.
Presidential. It's too close right now, as a matter of fact. So if you actually put, uh, some residential homes there, uh, that's not making work.
Well, I would think everyone will look at the marsh and not the sign, more, you know? And plus, plus, if the sign, if the sign is already there, they don't see it anyway, they believe the sign, yeah. It'll be, it'll be worth, because the new sign, the new tour sign is going to be closed. Instead of all those holes and load blocking the highway view, and that's what they're missing. Because probably if I don't get a variance, then I would probably, my end would do a long-term deal with Lamar. But I, I won't do that, because we're doing both signs in the county right now. And, is that a question?
If you're changing to two feet?
Sir.
Is it electronic?
No, sir, it'd be, it'd be light, but it won't be electronic. Because the way everybody is a spur, if nobody sits there on nothing, you'd have to count the turn, you know? Count that, you know, that.
Uh, I wish you'd go ahead. Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you said something earlier about pushing this property in the county and pushing it in the city. What, and you're considering either annexing it all into the city or adding it all into the county?
I have been told I can do either or.
So, Willie Bledsoe, Commissioner?
Sir.
What, what, you really got to make a decision about that?
And those, it, it needs to be, seems like the thing you need to be sure of what we can do with it before we do that. I, I, I need to make a little sense, and then make a decision. Uh, I, I, I don't really have a preference, you know? I do all the, I can't say you, I do all the city with it. There's a, I've had one process, it was like that, all the priest Ross, it was split by that. So it's kind of unique. And if the sign was already there, had been there since the spur was built, I wouldn't even bother y'all asking for this. Any more questions?
So the end result of this, and the question that I posed, is how will this benefit the city?
How will benefit the city? I'll talk good about it. I, I don't know, I don't know if I answered it out there, Ms. Eric, but, uh, but I don't see how it would hurt the city. I, I would be, this, and, and y'all, y'all know the kind of signs there, y'all all seen through you. And you know the guy that will put up there, and there's a, there's a picture of both of them in the question over there. So you can see through the master screen of the computer, what it's handling by. And, um, I, I can't answer that for you. That piece, that piece of land out there is, is in the city and it's going to, because if I get this, I'm going to have a perpetual easement and that lasts forever. And it'll be interesting for him, so I'll be playing back some of my little swing. Going there. No, they won't play that.
And how did this line, does the sign, do we have to handle this?
I got to have, I got to have one in the county.
Do you have a city business line?
Sir.
Do you have a city business line?
No, sir, I'm just.
There you go, there's more of you.
There you go. Staff. Yeah, yeah, I can't watch you do it, I mean, I don't know why I say it would. Sir, city attorney.
Business located in the county, we have business.
We have to give them what we consider a location.
Are you leasing property to sign something, or will you actually own the sign?
No, sir, we, we have, we have a sign in the, in the store.
Stand start a sale?
Right, and these locations that we have in the county and this one, we give them a perpetual easement that, that just lasts. Right, you know, and that lets somebody in there and maintain the sign, and that company actually owns that little boost of property. So it's kind of cut out of the whole big boost of property.
I have a very difficult time with this one, because it completely goes against what the public has already spoken in regards to the comp plan, distance between signs, just the visibility. distance between signs, just the visibility.
I understand, but like I said, with the distance, I couldn't help that they have more signs than I do. And that sign was there before the comp plan, and it's not adding, it's not adding signs, it's another number. Now, seventeen is gonna continue to be that way. And I know that y'all would like for seventeen to be pretty, and we own property there, so we're best at it, and we want it to be. Um but it's uh, it's it's still a major part of there, it's it's not like a neighborhood, it's Highway seventeen. Miami and Miami.
You are adding on the other sides of the sign, so you are adding a different side?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are, but but the sign is there now, it's a tree, we are.
They still have to come to the.
We have young people, that's what I, that's what I'd be next, I'm like. Because the the fire tree is gonna stay, we're gonna leave the big oak tree. It's a, it's a blessing when we walk out and then look at it and the big oak trees are really there. They're all on the front of the front, so they don't have to come down and injure your lives. So so it's still gonna be a, we're gonna build this property, track. And if we do it nice and and if we if we develop it, those plans will come forward, y'all, y'all will see what they've been doing before. It is like a pet collection, you know? And I I I think whoever buys it or if we do it, that's gonna be a pretty good problem for the city.
Where? I guess this question is a question, well, in reference to these pictures on on sign.
Do you know, uh, don't we come back across seventeen, we just a little bit to the south, you have three of them on hand, quick succession. And more for the Wall State Building? I don't have to try the the root signatures, but they're only three hundred and sixty feet separating the first one. So as soon as you start to come off the spur, it's south on seventeen, you see it on the right-hand side, that person's actually kind of in the marsh, they're really close to it, so those are ones that are close. And if I could answer a couple of other, try to clarify a couple of other points. Uh we do the location map in page one. Um Mr. Boone's property, his is the one that is outlined there, that entire piece of property is in the city. The one that is in the county is the one that's immediately to the east of it, that has a irregular shape. And you will notice that there's not very much of one there, so there's not too terribly much. That one's in the county, it doesn't have a whole lot of development, developmental acreage to it. The property immediately to the south, if I'm not mistaken, is owned by the state or somebody else in the zone conservation preservation, it is marsh, it cannot be developed. That is a mere twenty-two feet plus or minus from the existing board. And the very, the separation criteria is three hundred feet, and it's only twenty-two feet. And billboard will be doubling its size, it's one from one face to two faces, which is doubling the size of this planer. Another question is to place, uh, uh, Mr. Boone is is allocating that uh this sign has been there for such a long time and it has never been improved. Are there anything in our ordinances uh to to state that when someone has time to own, things do improve? Uh and and signs get get larger or bigger or get better, uh so the, his was made back in the early fifties or sixties. And wouldn't that allow for him to to improve his sign?
He didn't. It's grand, it's a non-avoidant, you cannot enlarge it, you cannot change the shape of it without bringing it into conforming. So if that board was knocked over by a hurricane, he could build it back to the exact same dimension and shape.
It wouldn't make sense though.
He can't increase it because it's a non-conforming.
I I understand that, I was just, I understand that, so I'm saying that uh back then, billboard was crying back then on another network, but now billboards are 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 increasing in height and going up, so he has no improvement, he has no improvement whatsoever.
That's because.
Part of what we got there.
That's because of rules or regulations that this petition and previous conditions have put on, saying that we need more separation between boards, it's non-conforming. As of this day, he could replace what's there, if he didn't want to enter into the lease with Lamar, however, if he can get out of that, he could build back the exact same size billboard today.
But he couldn't wait for it, for that to happen?
Correct, but there are, there is a pretty strong direction in the comp plan to not allow the smaller signs not to double it and to minimize the impact without all being built on seventeen. My opinion is going in the opposite direction of what we showed.
So if we, what's uh, sign that this day, we can have business?
We cannot, can't allow any increase in large metal in our height or anything, if we're going forward tomorrow, we can go back to what he has today, but no.
So when were, when were these put into place? When were these specifications?
The comp plan in two thousand eight, that's specific language, and that's those separation distances between buildings has been in there for a long period, it falls out in here, certainly. And we've tweaked them a little bit, um, we had added between digital billboards, so we've added some distances. But that one thousand two hundred and fifty feet has been in there, I'm pretty sure ever since I've been here, so basically, there's leather layers, the minimum, and not longer.
So how do we allow a, a billboard to get built? That's a crazy thing, but since it was there before, how do we allow that?
I can also not confirm one way or another, like that, his was there before it got done, so things were built.
So I have a question, so I have a seven pin problem in the county. Yeah, that's a problem, that's a county.
The Marshall thing?
It's, sure, Pittsburgh, Kansas City County, Vecium Center to the north of that, and City City, and those first couple of billboards are in the city.
Okay, so you say those signs are in the city on the other side? You know that for sure?
I'm pretty sure.
You're pretty certain?
We.
Let me tell you where the city limit sign is, the city limit sign is on the west side of the building, can you just put that shelf there?
So he, so that's in the county? Yeah. Um, yeah, because the uh, the uh, the fire, the the fire station, our fire station, can you tell me? Can you, it's not, okay, the chief there. I saw chief in here. It is, okay, I thought I saw the chief, and he told me that, like, in the county.
This?
No. We own it, like, but it's in the county. No, chief?
The tenant said.
It's in the city.
It said the city.
It said the city, okay. That's a little.
Thank you, Mr. Boone. Uh now, is there anybody to speak for or against uh? Please step forward, take your name.
Please, I'm not necessarily for or against it, but I know that we've had a lot of talk regarding how we're going to be handling it. I think until you have uh the urban development, I really want to look for urban plan, urban developer, whoever that is coming to help us design how you know that quarter of the book. I think we ought to be careful in what we approve as variances, because where you approve as a variance for one, another later on you want it also. So two, we have an idea what we want that whole quarter to look like, I think maybe, I'm not sure what's the urban thing about approving it today, but maybe we should take.
Any more questions, please?
Yeah, I'm alive, sorry, thank you.
Anyone else to speak for or against the way this petition, the variance petition, variance petition? So being the commissioner, uh, it's a pleasure, I um seem to be, uh, we've got a couple issues that not, not been cleared up.
Mr. Boone, I must offer a motion to defer to this particular issue. As a particular property, the situation is more in the lines of.
While the motion is second, that we defer this item to a simple clarification, then that, I would believe. Yes, Mr. Boone, but you said I see your request that you defer to the day we serve the sign, does that, does that have a meaning?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
Michael, on next one?
To our next meeting?
Sure.
Do you have any other questions, please?
The five, what would you rather?
Sorry, I need, I need to go back to my man here. Uh, would you mind if I, about I speak to you, modify your uh motion, please?
So, Mr. Boone, I'd like to offer a motion to defer uh variant petition fifteen dash two until our next meeting, so we can get some clarification on property lines towards the city of one.
Sure, okay. Uh, that motion has been modified to, I have a date certain, which is our next meeting, um, which will be?
Twenty?
May twentieth, uh, May twentieth. Are there any further discussion on that motion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we know for certain that it matters whether or not it's a county and there's the sign closest to it is a county within the county or extended, I mean, and and if we if we deny the application, that can the applicant come back at a later time, or how long? If it's in the county, do we have anything to add?
Yes, if the applicant annexes his property to the county, we can have a review, he can go back, and the county says, if he want to build his county, he can do that.
Well, it depends on what their legal regulations are, I mean, they have some legal regulations, but yes, he he has an opportunity to see that. The prior property, when you start the annexation, it's thus, the property that he stopped by then, went next door, they were bringing, they lost it before they actually completed the annexation. So both of the properties have been in the city. Um, I believe that for reasonings, if you can deny it, it's six months away compared, I can't remember that at the same time as for the variance, can you remember, was that a question?
Oh, I was just asking, if if it is determined that the other sign is in the county, uh, does it have any effect still on what we're dealing with as far as the city goes, because that's in the county?
It would, because our separation distances would not be applicable to that sign, but guarantee those signs.
Okay, that that's what I was prepared to, that would, it would. But but you could change the service minutes.
Another question, do you feel you can get this information to us by the next meeting?
Absolutely, it's just a little computer, once it is, I'll follow that, including that, you're right, the door will be looking at the city county boundary, but it varies.
Thanks. Any further discussion? All those who favor for the further, uh, until our next city council meeting, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, let the group reply, four, one. Okay, we will, sir, we will take this matter up on May twentieth. And we will make a decision on it up on May twentieth. Sir? Sir? Okay, uh, we have had our set agenda, uh, item number three, consider approval April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, record schedule. Meeting minutes, uh, would you please approve for second two and uh, uh, entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Same.
Probably motion second for the approval of the minutes dated April fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, are there any further discussion, just a listen? There's been, uh, all those who favor, please raise your right hand, that motion carries, thank you. All right, item number four, consider approval of renewal of general liability and property insurance, Mr. Bonnie Roberts, our HR director, is presenting.
The cap report that you have of forty percent of slight increase, one point four percent, um, in the coverage, this is again with uh, GMA. Um, we actually received a rate decrease in general liability and law enforcement. But the overall increase is this. Do you have any questions in particular?
Hey, I have one, uh, you said it was being made by seeing McGinty Gordon, so.
Right, the the brokerage fee is split through McGinty Gordon Associates, who is the broker that shops this insurance for us, certain intermediary, whenever there are future difficulties. And Gallagher Bassett also has a broker, so we have shared that brokerage fee.
So Gallagher is with GMA?
Yeah, well, GMA contracts with Gallagher, we, there are several players involved. But Gallagher Bassett plays, Chris is playing, Arthur Gallagher is the underwriter, and do you have any results?
Okay, I have one way to take it.
Yes.
So the one point four percent came from the increase area?
No, they came from a variety of areas, I'm pretty beginning here answering specific questions, I have a few too. Uh, in our auto physical damage, we have increased the number of vehicles, and we purchased, of course, newer vehicles, so the values increased. There's also some inflationary increase in property values, um. Craig, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Bonnie, uh, it is a registration, thanks, sir, I'm ready to begin, in forward session.
Yes, sir.
Uh, by any registration of what the changes were, uh, the property values were increased slightly due to the inflationary increase, but the premium went down because they reduced the rate per thousand, so it was actually a uh fourteen thousand dollars less in property insurance premium. Public officials, premium went up about five thousand dollars, that's based on the number of law enforcement officers, uh, which had a
So the premium was about a whole even now? Yeah, that was the premium rich, so a whole even went down, that was just me?
No, the uh, the law enforcement, excuse me, the public officials, a lot of those went up by five thousand dollars, that's based on your code, so your budget numbers obviously increased, and we had something like fifty on the on the officials over the last, uh, period.
Okay.
You gotta pay anything before you have something there, uh, standing. And the automobile ability is up, uh, six thousand dollars, that would increase the number of automobile insurance from a hundred percent seven to a hundred and five.
Okay, I see.
And the auto physical damage is also up by seven thousand dollars, and that would increase in, uh, nine years on physical damage, with those getting new vehicles with higher cost, you're in higher. Overall, rates themselves are pretty much the same as last year, so the increase is due more to an increase in exposure time on these.
Okay. Question for Mr. Rick McGinty?
So that sound, we'll commit a, what would you say?
I'm sorry?
I was, no.
Any question for Mr. McGinty or HR director, Miss Roberts? If you're not, I entertain a motion, please?
Make a motion that we approve renewal of general liability and property insurance, seven.
Probably motion second, then we approve of the renewal of the general liability and property insurance. Uh, there any further discussion? The being of, all those favorite, please raise your right hand. All right, thank you, Rob, thank you. Okay, item number ten. Mr. Christopher Casey.
All right, so. John Watson, please, you're going to work, you hear us about that you want to go, or, or, that you want, or. Thank you, President.
Commissioner, thank you, uh, Mayor, Commissioner, um, and we're proud, Joint Water and Sewer Commission is proud of you, not me, on the activities we have with the city of Brunswick District. Uh, first of all, the proposed drive, uh, open pressure sewer system, design right now, we're hoping by the end of May, design will be complete. And also a budget number and a new testament will be submitted to us, so we can put this in our, uh, our part in our program. And also our capital approval plan. Uh, this area land is from Paversham, about two commercial drive, and it's a large commercial that lies in the city of Brunswick. Uh, it's currently a septic system, uh, there, which are failing, and a lot of businesses request us to act. In public, uh, in public commentary, we had a good attendance, positive attendance in the, in the commission, Joint Water and Sewer Commission. We found that it was a very viable, uh, project for us to proceed and get a return on. Uh, the next, uh, subject is the master plan. This is a seven-year update, it should have been done a five-year. This is a very serious, uh, detailed master plan update, looking at community for that being completed. Once it's reviewed and approved by the Joint Water and Sewer Commission, I'll get a copy for each of your commission. And also for your staff to review, and we'll tab the projects that were located in the city of Brunswick District. Uh, recently, uh, the ISO fire protection product was, uh, completed. And, uh, we felt proud that we were actually included with the fire departments and the public works section. There was a lot of improvements identified, uh, with that, and I'm pretty sure you can, uh, state that we, uh, we all worked together hard on this. We identified a lot of areas that don't have fire protection that's needed. And, uh, we also did improvements to the system during this thought, uh, I think it came out very well. Uh, the next subject is, uh, we, uh, provided a proposed loss list, um, special purpose of a lot, or, local option sales tax list, project list, to the Atlantic County Commission. Um, out of that, three of the eight projects that we submitted lie in the city of Brunswick District. And they're needed projects, a lot of them deal with, uh, infiltration of groundwater into our sewer system. And then there's also a lot of water improvements. Uh, it's equally, uh, distributed between the districts and we definitely make sure that the city of Brunswick is taken care of in that test. Uh, we also have well-defined parameters of the projects, stating exactly where they start before they stop. And there's another area on, on the project, in the max, uh, when the project's done, there will be nothing added to it. And we'll keep the public updated to get the, the proposed loss list approved. Uh, Urbana sewer improvements, that's long-awaited, uh, and we're planning on putting that out today, within the next two weeks. All the engineering has been completed, the proposal, bid proposal, RFP is completed, we're ready to put that out for advertising. And that affects the, uh, publicity that's in the median out, uh, in front of McDonald's, uh, highway seventeen, the J H Scott Drive. Uh, there's a plot that, uh, is in conjunction with, uh, the city of Brunswick, the Board of Education, and Joint Water and Sewer that are considering right now. There's a sewer line that runs down Mansfield Street, um, the Atlantic Academy is in renovation right now. And with Board of Education, uh, one of the sewer lines that runs in front of Atlantic Academy is almost done with buildings. It needs to be moved out away from there. And it's also a, uh, a problematic sewer line, which the improvements will help along with the project, we're talking about, about five minutes. Um, that will be briefed to our commission tomorrow, uh, the board is, uh, having a timeline on the, uh, of the total cost. Um, this will be nice to get this completed while school is out and less, uh, problems for the school system and the city project. On June twenty-second, uh, we're proud to announce that that is the total paid that we're moving into our new office. Um, as you see, there's a lot of improvements in the apartment areas, lighting will be improved, the storefronts, and access off the cost, or at least.
That's always very good.
That's in the city also. And, uh, and aside note on that, uh, the person releasing our space from currently, uh, states that we, he would like us out of there by July first because he has another tenant that we're moving in, in the city of Brunswick. Um, the hostel property that we have for sale across from the ball fields, uh, we've had three serious prospective buyers looking at that. We're hoping that that, uh, comes about, we have four level hotel across from the park, the ball fields. Uh, but, uh, there is some activity, people looking at that property. Uh, the Joint Water and Sewer Commission has been asked to attend the, um, the interviews with the Bats. That's tran, most transportation made, uh, decided prior to the project. This is long-awaited and needed because in the decision process on selecting projects, we'll have to finally including water and sewer on decisions on infrastructure improvements, the transportation. Uh, the Mansfield storm water and sewer project, uh, approved, we'll be talking about that in just a moment. And that includes pretty much what we've been working on.
Steve, could you go ahead and give us an update from the Joint Water and Sewer perspective on the man's deal file?
Yes, Commissioner. Um, the Mansfield project, um, we went and, uh, as we discussed in the last, uh, city commission, the Joint Water and Sewer Commission had asked if we delay the, uh, the water project. Just so we got a fine understanding between, uh, the MOU, understanding between the city of Brunswick and Joint Water and Sewer, funding, engineering, inspections, and, uh, the responsibilities of the different work. Uh, Joint Water and Sewer, uh, had no change in their, their portion of the work, uh, and the, well, you know. The portion that will be funded, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-two, uh, dollars and some cents, plus a ten percent contingency. And also, uh, engineering and inspection funds, that's all included in our budget, and that's, uh, in reserve. So, uh, we'll have no problem with the money for the portion of the project. We're very proud that, uh, we're working on the city of Brunswick on this project, get a lot of needed improvements, and it's gonna be a beginning of a, a long partnership of, of projects together and saving on costs.
Let me just, see if I can clear this up. Uh, with the funding that we're providing, you, you guys have also provided that, that, what, to get this project complete? That's what seemed like you saying?
Uh, the.
The Mansfield project?
Commissioner, the, uh, total of our, our portion, for the sewer and water portion, and gave me the amount to that, is seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, six eighty-two. We split the engineering costs and then also some of the traffic control, uh, road control items, we try to split those evenly. So, the, if the city did it alone, uh, we'd split that cost and cost savings same way with us.
Okay, but will we complete this project, will the project be completed? And I realize we have some short, 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 uh, would the project be completed?
As far as water and sewer intent on the project, we'll complete everything for sewer and water.
And that would be aware of, please?
I have a mental block here that goes all the way from Bay Street, all the way up to.
Ellis to Bay?
Ellison, Ellison Bay, Ellis Street to Bay.
And that would be a little flat, that's pretty.
Uh, no, sir, uh, there's been portions that the sewer and water will reach over the other side. I think most of the storm improvements will be on the, on the side of the street.
Or twice that.
On the side of the street.
Uh, I got one other question for you, sir, um. What's happening with this odor in the city? I mean, are we doing odor control in the city? I know you do a lot of odor control for effects side, and the, the government's been complaining, they, they complain about odor, you know, things happen. What's happening in the city for the odor?
Uh, we have been treating the city for odor, but if you have some locations, I'll climb them right down.
Tell you when you ride down, uh.
Yeah, it's always on, it's always on.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
It, it is, and, and they, they mask it, they just do the spray.
Well, it's bad, I mean, it's, it, the only, seems to me, uh, I don't believe in all this, the only way to control it is to rebuild, cap off, and, um, suction off.
The, I think what the commission would be referring to is the headworks. Uh, Gatton Creek is, uh, actually one of three wastewater treatment facilities that we, uh, operate, you know? Uh, it's the largest of all three, uh, takes about forty of Atlantic County and all the industrial waste for Atlantic County. And Pino processes their waste, um, that's a large amount of smell that you're smelling. Uh, also we have, uh, cane frequency through several industrial waste, uh, providers are, are processed that they have to. Um, I think, Commissioner, you might have been involved in the, uh, the odor control on the headworks. We'll look at, if we can, might not, I think, get handful that's spraying them. That's called an opti, optimizer unit, and it basically sprays them in, just like, uh, a, uh, and I think we're going through fifty-five gallons of that every three months. Uh, we possibly could, uh, up, up that. Um, one thing I do want to explain, uh, that's, uh, not all of that smell comes from Gatton Creek. Uh, there is, uh, another, that comes from other industries around the area, that a lot of times we get money for, but, uh, we'll pay a lot of potential for headworks.
And, and weren't y'all trying to be conscious of the timing at which you release or you did things, then those larger.
That is correct. Uh, a lot of the discharges in the industry do are, are done at night.
Yeah.
Um, and then, then we also try to rotate them, so we're not, uh, processing all that waste at one time. I'll have a better report the next time that I'm asking, um, and I'm sure it's.
That's fine, you know, we used to call, we have that smell, the, the smell of money, but since we don't own young water anymore, we don't work, so we don't say anymore, we just say it's a bad smell. So anyhow, we appreciate what you do, uh, sir. Yes, sir.
Do you own the Mansfield project, what would be additional cost to the Joint Water and Sewer before the delay happens?
Uh, it's pretty close within, uh, ten percent of what we're paying right now.
Okay, we seem to have taken item number ten and item number fourteen, discussing the, uh, city public funding, uh, that seemed to be, uh, about. So, Commissioner, you satisfied with, uh.
I have, I have item right there, it's on the volume fourteen, with, uh, our, uh, major, uh, since right past.
Okay. Well, look, is it item five, to approve, I'll write in, we have to sign those board contract, Mansfield Street, structure, we have a little nation. Engineer, Mr. Albertson is presenting.
Yes, sir, um, as we discussed at the last meeting, um, because of budget concerns, we eliminated part of the storm right at the force of Mansfield Street. In original design, we had a storm line go down Broken North and South Side of Mansfield Street. Uh, due budget concern, we eliminated that line on the south side. So since our last meeting, we've gone back, sat down with Joint Water and Sewer, and spoken in there, and, uh, behind the quantities, good debt, show of worth taken out. We've asked the money, everybody agreed on the unit prices remain, um, the contractor has agreed to honor the unit prices still. We have put this quantity back in this spreadsheet and determined that the low bidder has not changed. So, uh, we're back, we're now at the point where the city's portion for the, for the storm water improvements in the project is four hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred, uh, dollars. We intend to make part of that from, from our last money and part of that from our two thousand sixteen bid funds, uh, which is, which is paid, uh, given state, transportation improvement funds, given state. So part of that will void, uh, from that, part of the, uh, budget. Okay, so, uh.
So is it part of, do you have a broken down as to what's, what, how much, what?
I don't, because I don't know, I have my head exactly what the remaining is, but.
Okay.
The count is on page two of two, where is the total based bid? Work for J H Scott, which is the low bidder. A million, one hundred seventy thousand, thousand, three hundred dollars, that's what you said.
Got it.
Is, is that four forty part of that number?
Yes, ma'am, that, that totally, you can say one point one million dollars is the total of the storm water, the four forty thousand, plus the joint water and sewers portion, seven hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Okay.
We reduced our, our schedule for that program, my hours was around seven hundred and thirty-two originally, and taken out that south side, um, cut us back to about four forty.
That's still part of, that's still a portion, just that we don't have the condition.
Right, we're still not doing the original, do that, don't have money that, uh. Here, what, what's gonna happen? And we, we don't do the other side of those, we're, 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 um. Obviously, it's gonna continue to get older, it's gonna continue to deteriorate, hopefully not too rapidly. Um, I hope that we can look at coming back, when we do have some money, maybe come back with some, some less intrusive measures to prepare that. Maybe we could, we could install a liner in there, um, or, or find a way to fix that bike and those structures so that we don't have to tear up the entire street and type off there. Because, you know, we'll have a nice new street, new paved street out here, so you hate to tear it up again. You know, we, the south side is the, um, the less concerning right now, the north side is more fair. Hopefully, we can get back pretty a lot before we have to do anything, and that would be something that's not too true.
And how about your Mansfield, for you, if we really pay you, when we get done with the map?
Well, we pay from Bay Street to, to, I believe right here is the split, is the middle street. And then I believe we're going, this place there, I think, the north side, that is the westbound lane, is paved all the way home to Edmore, if I'm not mistaken. And it won't be any disturbance on the south side, past that point, so, you know, that, the existing pavement there, is a pretty issue.
Want to pay it in the old way?
Yes, ma'am, would, would just solve that, uh, line, and say you have a clean joint there, pay it right again.
So, so, and what, what, so for future, um, future, uh, repairs, that, that we know are going to be did, is there an alternate plan that you already assessed already? Not to wait till repairs are in dire need, but is there an alternate plan already being established? Because it's gonna happen.
It's gonna happen, um, we, we have not sat down and put in specifics to it, um, like I was saying, there are methods out there, other methods other than the move or replace. We haven't sat down and put in, in calls of those exactly for this project, um, I believe, we were talking about, uh, that, that. We can do that, sit down and kind of try to come up with an idea.
That's, that, I mean, that's, that would be proactive, we would see, um, if we know we don't have the money to do the other side, or we know at some point it's gonna need to be done. So, it looks like a short term, a long term, alternate plan, we'd be, how many places that add into the act, what's the problem? We'd be consider places that add into the act, once the problem is presented, so...
Sure, sure, we can do that. I'm sure we have another philosophy coming up, you know, we're going to outline and make like that for that, so...
Will you give street, the structure, people that be, be horrible, have to cross over, or will they...
We will, we will cross each street, so there will be some disturbance right there, um, okay, now, there will be some interruption there.
Well, make sure to let people know in advance.
I guess the good thing is, we've done it in the summer, so that the school down the street won't be impacted as much.
We make sure we have a pass for, we make sure we, we got that procedure in place. We minimize questions and phone calls, and lets everybody know in advance what's...
Well, we're trying to keep the church up and there, just to kind of have maybe coming along. So, uh, we keep them up today, because those are the two biggest thing, traffic generated.
Yes, thank you.
But yeah, to them, probably, well, that'll be on.
Was there a moment to be that more of a plea form?
Yes, sir, Commissioner, I'd like to go right in full, please, sir, go ahead.
Uh, we look down in, in our book here, the fifth paragraph says that the following is caused by reduction of budget due to limited funding. My question is, this, this was scheduled, and it was, it was funded, it was, uh, it was memorandum of understanding that was signed between joint water sewer and the city. Why have we got limited funding now? What, what, what is all about limited funding?
I'm not, I'm not sure exactly, or, or one specific, um, I guess there was probably some overrun, very disrupted, or... But I, I don't have a specific.
I think we need to get a specific, basically, method, you might do a lot.
When we originally amended the budget back in November, we had set aside six hundred thousand dollars for Manfield Street, that's just weeks. And, um, myself as the finance director, and engineer, we went through, decided how much you need to increase these projects. And so, six hundred thousand was the, the determination that was made. I really did not even see the seven hundred thousand number until I caught a few weeks ago, and it was coming before you guys. And I looked at it, and I got the, the spots, and when I looked, we don't have none of this, and that's why it was cool at that time. I ended up having to, um, planning a bit over what the budget amount was, it's set aside. Um, so, that's basically my opinion of what happened. Um, I didn't see the original, you know, the change in the, the, the work, and the city got a little bit... I presume that was signed before Mr. White said, I, I installed.
I think we, we need some answers to why we, we found on this project, why we're gonna put up with the people here in this city, backing the consequences of having to come back and redo the order. If, if we have to redo it, we would...
Well, you know, I, I agree with you, Mr. White.
Yes, sir, I need to know how to do it.
No, I said, I agree with you, uh, uh, Mr. White, question, uh, so we have a shortfall here with, uh, this project? Of how much is, how much is shortfall? Really, what's that? There's no way, uh, uh, borrowing money to, uh, this project, or...
Well, I think there, there are some other places in the slot by budget, where money is set aside. And you can actually see that if you look at the, um, financial course on page two, which shows exactly how much is left in each category. Now, you know, whether the commission wants to move money in, um, from one of those other areas, uh, there's, um, you know, there are parks, some is outside, there's, there's, obviously, that for the convention center, that's money, um, over in that area. Um, I think there's, there's a little bit for water sewer, which, um, they all waste water. Um, but that's basically, um, the money that we have, that there's some in parks, and, um, that's, we, we'll pay that, that's first of all, I'm questioning.
So, the, 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 on that one point three, then, is in, was that storm drainage improvements?
That's getting out money that's left. Now, um, that also, it really makes a little bit lower there, but part of the thing is, um, we were paying about plus five, the, the match for the stormwater feasibility study, we were matched sixty-five thousand, and we're going to get back sixty-five thousand, um, when we submit the expenses for that. So, I think that's money that will come back, I may not have to take that in, but I'm about to only sixty-five thousand dollars. Now, is there any sort of farm funds, we do have, so it's more recapture, it's got about two hundred and something thousand dollars in it. Um, you know, I guess the, the point is, we begin to look at that very carefully and see what we want to do right now, and what we had, the intended to do with the original, and, um, you know, so...
We've been leveraging what we have, loved that as great opportunities come up, and we need to manage it.
So, I mean, that's, that's the question we have to decide, is, uh, you know, is that there somewhere else? But I know that when you did this, I, I know that this is a project, it's a complex. Um, but I don't know, I guess, we said this, so, obviously, we collect as much as we probably run collect, but we can put it back in account, and we provide the budget back in November. But, um, and then, you know, the markets go over what they, what they just stated to me, um, so I, you know, that's...
That's an interesting question. When was plus five, uh, completed, I mean, it ended?
Probably about three or four years ago.
Three or four years ago?
Yeah.
And we have one point five million, uh, in, well, old document interest, and, okay. Now, evidently, at, at those points, should have been collecting a little bit of interest.
It is.
Okay, and it shouldn't be one point five, should be maybe around one point seven, maybe?
Well, we don't allocate it out to each of the project, I mean, just what we do is table, basically. Um, because we got a, a budget over on that left-hand side of the studies, and we included in that the interest term, the utility grants, and, um, the money we got back from that work, we can call it, we'll get that interest rate with them. Um, so, I mean, you know, it's not a standard, it's sort of allocated now, but we don't tie it to a particular project and say, you know, here's, um, what it earned, but I remember that we earned all that money, like, that's what interest rates are, aren't they? I remember that it's earned, it's earned back several years ago, when the county gave that money, didn't give it to us, because of the jail, so... So, we already have it, it's earned, you know, and we also have some, it's not huge amounts.
So, and that's how, so we have one point five million already?
Pardon?
That's how, we have it already?
Yes. Yes, this is all money that we have, we are so different, I think, um, this past month, there were March, when I did this work, I think we got another fifteen hundred dollars on the lost money, plus, there's some trickle in, and I guess, um, I don't know, every month, a little bit, I guess it's some adjustments to free experience, whatever, but that collection has been gone for three years, at least.
I'm sitting there, you can see, we are struggling with having to, uh, not do the whole project. We had this issue in the last, last meeting, and, and again, we really want to try to do the whole project. We don't want to hold up, uh, anybody not getting done, I mean, starting, but we really want to try to see if we can do the whole project, because we don't want to come back again and do something that way. It's not your fault, I'm not saying that's why you're doing something like that.
Right, right. We're, we're struggling to account accountability for a little, um, that is, is all limited funding, that's... And there's no way to move this over, there's no way, and if this thing was, uh, was there, and it's going to have a company standing, was, uh, uh, silent, and we need some answers as to why we got overrun now and put us in this predicament, just this simple plan. And then certainly, no one will be looking back, if you really need to make...
That's true, uh, Commissioner, even though finding answers, you still need some findings, and like you said, I still need that. Um, maybe we can get joint water still to, uh, continue.
My name's...
Yes.
My name's Paul White.
Yeah, that's a good question, absolutely, I'm facing, uh, certainly.
It's bad, Steve.
I suggest we look at how we're overrun the project, and if we get accountability, why do we run it?
That, that's a good idea, Commissioner, I was guessing we're still, like, we give, we're paying all day long, we're still...
No, I think the point of paying, now, maybe there's some money somewhere that might be in the project, if we have those to go back and do some building.
Okay, maybe.
It's, it's just a point of paying.
We need to, this is, I have to be informed of the product, and we need to decide what we're gonna do with this project, are we gonna move forward, or are we gonna try to get this money before we move forward? That's, that's our issue today.
Are you ready for a note?
Well, if I got the first discussion, first of all, right? And then, on my right side, so the total cost to the city was only seven hundred and seven thousand for both sides of Manfield Street?
Yes, sir, the original bid was roughly seven bid.
Okay. So, so we're, 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 it's actually, we're doing about three hundred and ten thousand, so, sure. At this point, um, JH Stone is ready to go, to, to do, do what, what needs to be done as far as product, that we have at this level, and I disagree. I had, well, I just, I do remind what you give at some point, doing the, the process of this project, if we can come up with funding, if we can find the, the numbers, can, can that project be extended to, to, to include the South Side of Manfield Street?
Yes, sir, I think, um, you know, it's almost, we're all getting to the corner of pain, which, I guess, I can add your, your good terms of that, right there.
So...
It would be easy to go in with change orders and pick up the other part of this that we have from the South Side, while the project is ongoing, because long, like you said, as long as we have done it, we'll take the part of it.
Oh, there's a, um, tearing up, we have two times. Is there necessarily a cost savings of any great degree to do it all at the time, we, we, the public is managing normally?
The, the existing storm drainage from the South Side of the way, is all on the grass strip between the curb and the cyclone. Uh, we were gonna, we were gonna do that in the street, but we, this, we said, we want to abandon all that in place. What we can do, a very easy solution, the garrison, we can go in and slip line it, and I have to dig up, and it's, it's back like Atlanta, the reason we did Atlanta the way we did it, because of the cost. So, it's more to dig and replace it, because we might back in, than just go ahead and slip line it. So, that's the reason we did that. If, if we can't do this project now, and we have to wait until we get this lost fund, or it's a other means funding this, then we can go in and slip line this side of, and, 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 if we disturb, maybe three places, and cut some square. So, that, that's the other alternative to, the two alternatives are, if we find some money between now and before you get this through the project, or if you do the project, we go ahead, take the other half, take all we were running from this bid, and try to get a bid out of it, and prices are all, all that, so we just go ahead, sign a change order, and then go ahead and do that part, or we can wait later, and go ahead.
Commissioner, John, the, uh, the question on the cost saves, um, this project, actually, maybe the price of oil is way down. Um, majority of the water sewer, I'm sure, BBC have to do oil products, the hating has a lot to do with oil products. Um, the contractor wants to redesign his, uh, estimate the whole prices, he went back to his manager, he asked one time, and he said, "Sir, do you mind coming back to the significantly cost that increases because the price of oil is going down, and so the, the material prices are based on those?" So, that's the explosion, if you're asking that, I mean.
Thank you.
All right, uh, can you throw this discussion, was all for, yes, sir? I, I just want to spell my item fourteen here, before we do the loan, I would like to have the payment as to go, um, that, that it's all, um, us to have a limited funding decision, like...
Can you, item number fourteen, what would you like, uh, possibly do, uh, I just...
Mr. Commissioner, I think as, as the representative of finance committee, that we can count, we'll be there, we'll come back with some, some answer. We can just find out who we are.
Well, we, we, we have a part of, I read that was the overrun of the, um, problem. We know that, that's part of, we look, we looked at that, so we know that specific, uh, specific.
I, I've been reading the vast news as far, but I didn't say we need some answers, and I think we're, we're, but, so, uh, they do, and they're watching, like, here, we get funding for this project. Can I, can I say one more thing about that?
Yes, sir.
There's difference between an overrun of a job and an estimate you have to give with, and then you put a bid on. What has happened on this, on both jobs, was the bids came in higher than we originally expected. It wasn't like we were a big job, and then we take twice what we get done, as what the bids were. We had the numbers of gap in the building that came up, were the engineers, as I, as, as engineer, my engineers estimated of cost for the police do project. We come up with nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I think it was, for nine hundred for Atlanta, we came up with six hundred for, uh, for Manfield Street. Atlanta came in at a million and two, kind of did everything we had to do, and Atlanta, and, and Manfield, it was, uh, about, um, it wasn't an overrun on the project, it was a higher bid that walked it up the bridge, we anticipated from the...
So, so in essence, with, with, with the explanation that you just given, so there should have been some adjustment beforehand, before we moved into another project, once, once it was determined that the amounts were not going to be what was estimated. At that point, there should have been a change.
As soon as we got a bid, I think, we found out that the bid, uh, but then you make the bid, you have a lot of...
Right, right, I understand that, but now we have the bids.
And that's why we take a change, that's when you have to start with the job, if they want money, yeah.
Right, I, 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 I'm fact further than where we are now. There were initially amounts given that were estimated for those other two projects. So, once you found out that those other two projects were not going to come in at what was estimated, were, were, were changes made in the, in the budget, uh, in the financial statements that were previously prepared, were changes made to go and show where we were, where we actually were, where we actually came in, and that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get to.
I saw other bids at the same time.
I saw those bids at the same time.
Go. But that's. Now, thank you, thank you, uh, I think, to you, uh, uh, five minutes. We found, I, I, we're looking for, we're looking for, okay, guys. All right, well, I'll, I'll, we'll go back to ninety to five, and I can sit, I would, uh, consider a motion.
I'll make a note here that we go ahead, there's, uh, a limited funding that we have to do, that didn't matter at work, that we can, uh, can do for, on Manville Street. Go back and, and, and look, and, and keep digging, and, and, they add, I know a great effort has been made, and we found we had to go off, I know it's been made on the side of the door for sure, and I know we consider funds for this. And, and really, uh, because be digging, that's all we can do, is, is the higher advantage to do Manville Street with the memorandum, and then we have an understanding, and we're really, really grateful. And that's the way I think this commission wants to do, to, to win this free card.
Okay, I got a long motion by construction, I can't repeat it. Uh, can I get a second, please?
Second.
Okay, probably motion second for us to move forward with, uh, authorizing this most of the water contract on Manville Street, infrastructure and rehabilitation. Uh, there in further discussion. If you're in the all of favor, please raise your hand. Okay. And vote to carry this thing, here's our, it's a lot of, uh, here, uh. I don't, six. Should approve of the actual city man's assigned contract to the Georgia Department of Corrections for three crews from July one, two thousand fifteen, to June third, two thousand fifteen, to our fiscal year. Our city manager, Ms. Mills, will be presented.
I, I, this is very nice, uh, because I know in the past, we have, we have had two crews that we contracted to rescue crews with the Georgia Department of Corrections, and we have been trying in the past to get, um, an additional, just one additional crew, and this year, they are all three now, this additional crew, so we have four, we have three, um, prices the same, thirty-nine thousand five hundred per crew, and so that would be a total cost to the city for all three, for a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred. The only additional cost of that, for nine thousand five hundred, would be that we will have to supply abandoned transport, and we have been, um, looking into what we could get to do that, that has a special outfit to do, but, um, we are looking to see if we can have a new standard that won't cost very much, and I guess this all started, uh, a year or so ago with Mr. Williams, and I, personally, my understanding was that the crews were like, we wanted one for the cemeteries, and one for the, um, parks, and one for, I think, the streets and sidewalks and people's lives.
So, we have dedicated crew now?
Well, no, we can still, we're, we're, uh, I have.
We've got a dedicated crew, dedicated, yeah, a broken crew, and, yeah, that, you know.
Budget on revenue and sixty-three or sixty-four percent on expenditure. So, we have expensed less than we had anticipated so far our revenues. We show over budget, uh, that's because we get the high points of, uh, collections on property taxes. No cash balance as of March thirty-first of three point five million dollars in the general fund. Lost distributions for the month of March, four hundred and two thousand compared to last March of four hundred and nineteen thousand. That's a seventeen thousand dollar decrease for the month. Uh, percentage did go down from last year to this year, so that's, uh, the expected. Year-to-date, four point two million in lost and four point three million compared to last year. High back lawn taxes, forty-one thousand for the month of March compared to fifty-three thousand for the month of March last year. Of course, that's the, uh, car, car sales. Year-to-date, five hundred and three thousand and compared to five hundred and eighty thousand last year. And that's just simply a function of car sales, so there's no change in percentages there. Um, page two is SLOSS, which we sort of discussed a little bit. We have a cash balance as of March thirty-first of three point five hundred and eighty-five. And we have collections from Lincoln County, sixteen million, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And you can see the interest, seventy-six thousand, the big grants, two hundred and eighty thousand. And reimbursement for best support being a college, one hundred and twenty thousand. Life today, we've expended thirteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand. Leaving us a budget balance in that right-hand column shows you what we have, how we have allocated those funds based on what the budget shows down. We have a little bit more than that number, around sixty-five hundred. That's because we have collected some little bits of money from SLOSS by, uh, which came in every month. The, during the current month, we spent eighty-nine thousand on streets. And that was in relationship with the little grant that we paid the old server, thirty-five thousand. And drainage, ten thousand, and it's one where we established it and a little bit in, um, the parks. We finished off an add-in, we have a balance of fifty-one thousand dollars. The amount that plays into that comes from the general fund and also from reimbursements from the CDPG entitled fund, which reverses us from salaries from community development personnel. Rest of our parents home care center, we have cash account currently, thousand six hundred and thirty. There, you can see the revenues, grants, year-to-date, nine four thousand. Product donation, six thousand. Transfer money over from the general fund, a hundred and fifteen thousand. And program income, a little over twelve thousand for total of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Expenditure year-to-date, two hundred and thirty-one thousand. Jekyll has a balance of twenty-nine thousand dollars roughly. Revenue year-to-date, three hundred and ninety-four dollars. We haven't, uh, expended any funds from that, that fund. Community Development Federal has a balance of a little over thirteen thousand. Revenue year-to-date, a little over a thousand dollars. We have spent ninety-eight hundred on the other, for the disabled program. And thirty-seven hundred thou- thirty-seven hundred thousand. Thirty-seven hundred on, uh, I don't think it's comparable to, uh, the list of four community parents. We're trying to leave it on two, yes. Soxville Recapture Account, we have a cash balance of two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. There was no money, we suspended out of that fund for the month of March. And year-to-date, we've almost spent nineteen thousand, so we've basically been holding on to those funds. Northern Street Commons, we have, we did not expend any money for the month of March out of Northern Street Commons either. Twenty-one thousand year-to-date, we've spent out of that fund and we've got a cash balance there of three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Sanitation Fund, year-to-date, a million, two hundred and fifteen thousand. Income, um, two hundred and forty-five thousand monthly billings. We have franchise fees, thirty-three thousand, um, allowance. We did have a service equipment, sold one hundred and fifty-seven thousand. That's when we sold the garbage trucks and that probably that money has been set aside on a special cash account on its own, the sanitation fund. And so that, that money is sitting in that account, um, or what is, is in our straight account. So we just decide out, you know, that money needs to be spent, it's up to a hundred and eighty-something thousand dollars to weigh in some money that in. You can see, obviously, this is year-to-date, made a hundred and ninety-eight thousand. We have, um, a cash balance in the regular sanitation account, nine hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And as I said before, that's mostly we collect every month off the last apartment tax bill, which covers the two thousand sixteen year, so, you know, the sum that we owe them down is we pay the bills every month. Recre- uh, additional information, recreation is on a separate sheet, we'll get to that. And the county control expense, nothing. Traffic control, it says, I have left this off sometime, hey, I said sometime standing in favor. There was nine hundred and forty-two dollars standing on a module controller, that's where it's in January. Westman, the bills, um, seventy-six thousand for trash pickup. Costs only thirty-six hundred for illegal, non-legal things. Free sleeping, ten thousand dollars, trash can pickup delivery, nine. You can see the total, number of year-to-date, for all of those services, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand. I guess we may not have done this in this, we have spent thirty-six thousand on illegal cleanups. Still have to talk on that. Recreation, um, payment services camps, we spent three hundred and thirty dollars to Blue Meowie for athletic necessities for baseball, softball, and volleyball. We also spent fifty-one hundred dollars for a commercial cleaner for the aquatic center for the pool. And the rest of the expenditures were for the negative community service, which is, uh, the Resilient Aquatic Center. Uh, so the total for that was twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the month. And those are just typical normally expenses of payroll and operating expenses, so.
The question from Ms. Mills on our budget?
I've got a question on the, uh, sanitation, uh, surplus equipment. How much more surplus equipment do we need to say?
Yeah, I mean. Well, before my computer went down today, we've been posting on the government address that we've got, uh, sway cars still going with our sanitation in one truck, and we're waiting on, uh, the new truck to arrive on board here. Sorry, we're in a quick surplus, and we just need to get our new trucks a time of July. So, we should have a little bit of sway car on the ground here, like, before we start to do that.
Any idea how much we're talking about, or is it?
Not, not three hundred thousand.
No. You know, I was surprised what we got for your garbage first on us. Like, I, I thought we could do most of what we did for the better, which was twenty-five, thirty thousand, but then they didn't come up like eighty thousand or whatever, I think, so. Um, if we get about twenty to twenty-five thousand, I'll be good with this. But we, we have, I think there's six, five or six trucks with a trailer sway cars to build.
Hopefully, we can send that around to a hundred thousand dollars.
Maybe tomorrow.
Well, okay, we can ask those streets, we will, but, you know, everything, uh, things where, uh, uh, but any of streets, we'll record it from there.
All right, well, the question comes to Mills, we'll turn it out, but.
I have a question that we approved the budget, um, for, for financial purposes.
Second. By my motion, second, for approval of our, uh, budget as presented by Ms. Mills, I find it important. Presented by Mills as, as presented. Any further discussion? If there being, uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Ms. Mills, that motion carries. All right, now, we will get back to, back to six, eight, uh, this Walker. Many, um, who was middle of our, about fifteen, about nineteen solid plan, about fifteen annual action plan.
Thank you, ma'am, I agree, sure. I'm going to try to look at this very quickly, you can do it all live for a minute. I'll just check.
I'll just say we will now, today.
I'm gonna try to look at this very quickly, I'm sure all of you got opportunity to go through it. And I'm just gonna point out some highlights in the plans. Um, you do have a copy of the two thousand fifteen, two thousand nineteen consolidated plan and also attached to the two thousand fifteen annual action plan. If you start with me on page six, um, this actually goes into our citizen participation plan, which, um, quite requires us to be base in our citizens and develop this plan. We had over thirty agencies that assisted with us in developing this plan. We have listed twelve in the actual plan plan, with additional, uh, some of the agencies were actually funded, which we will, I will go over further into the plans. So pages six and seven and eight and nine gives a list of all the agencies that we consulted there and what the actual plan addressed in the consultation, um, so far as our housing needs assessment, our homelessness strategy, economic development, our market analysis, and also our anti-farmage strategy. Um, you will turn please to page twelve. This is basically, we have three, uh, meetings. The values we have, one consists of our stakeholders focus group. And the other two are actually with citizens. And the third one is the social service agencies, which were listed in the previous pages discussed. You can turn please to page eighteen, it gives a overall map of our median income of our household in the community within the city of Brunswick. Um, there's a chart to your right that gives you, um, basically a chart of the actual, um, income levels, where a large majority of it is between thirty-six thousand and forty-seven thousand. And this is track, um, and this is track nine.
This is, uh, uh, City of Brunswick?
This is City of Brunswick, median household income. Where in red displays less than twenty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
You give me a location for that, basically.
Census, uh, nine is on, is northern, northern, US hobby seventeen. In your spur area, you're going north. And then everything that's taken in red is your census track six and seven, which is south end of Brunswick. So that would be anywhere from, you're looking at everything south of the spur to First Avenue. It's in your census track six and seven. Seven is where we're located now. So you actually take, you take a chart and you flip it.
Oh, flip, oh, okay.
Yes. Yes, flip it this way and that. The red area is the area that we're in now. So that is your north low income areas versus your north, um, of the city areas, where you have your higher income. Um, if you turn it over, it makes a little, make a little bit more sense on page nineteen, where you have our senior civilian army. So you're basically gonna look at it from this angle. Where is that forty percent?
Well, you know, Newcastle is pretty close to the water. I'm not, if this is Newcastle, how come there's so much?
Because when they, when they snapped it from out of the chart, they basically tried to capture all of the, the, the tracks without taking in the water, just to, to keep it, uh, physical, to work with the market. Make any sense?
None of the rules I do, I get.
And if you see, there's some little numbers I don't know if you've seen, but you'll see the six and you'll see the seven. Those are the tracks, it's kind of hard to see, you have to really, really be looking at it to really see. But you see the five, the zero, one, and the seven. And then this coin area goes in, what they did, they tried to take out the industrial areas, which everything from the Dallas Avenue is basically, you can print. So that's, uh, that wasn't included. Um, page twenty, basically goes over the area, um, of the marked family income, the median income of thirty to zero, thirty percent up to a hundred percent. And it just gives a listing of the household, the small family, the large family. And it breaks down the percentage of sixty-seven to seventy-four years of age and those who are seventy-five and older. The, 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 the. I am going to skip to page thirty-two, where we're going to our housing needs. And this is the housing that was a housing problem. The first page is from the need of thirty percent, zero, thirty percent, average median income. Page thirty-three goes from thirty to fifty percent average median income. And then thirty-four goes to eighty to a hundred percent average median income. Um, I would like to draw your attention to page thirty-three, where you're thirty to fifty percent, where there's a large amount of numbers in the jurisdiction. And if you review those numbers, I just want you to take a look at those numbers to see the number. And that just gives us a listing of how many individuals, um, have listed that they have major or minor issues within their homes. Um, this data was pulled from the two thousand seven, two thousand eleven, um, Community Housing American Survey in collaboration with the Census Bureau. So basically, um, US Department of Housing and Urban Development is not solely relying on the Census Bureau information. They're actually conducting surveys where the state of Georgia, all of our social service programs, they provide information into the survey and they take that information from Hollywood and they generate for each jurisdiction. So that's how we end up with this data. And that creates a market analysis for us that computes to give us this data. Um, if you go to page thirty-eight, it gives an overall cost burden. And the cost of housing cost burden is the individuals within the community that put more money into their homes to make prepared for their home living, actually to pay for the homes. So that's a jurisdiction of three thousand, three hundred and forty-five, fourteen, thirty-five. Then the, um, ethnicity of white reported at thirty percent income level that they have, um, cost burden. Um, black, African American, sixteen hundred, Asian, seventy, and Hispanic, two hundred. And then it goes from thirty to fifty percent and then fifty percent. But those were the highest numbers within the thirty percent median income. Um, public housing, I will address here quickly, um, we have five hundred and seventy-eight public housing units. And we have seven hundred and thirty-four specialty aid doctors within the community. With the public housing, um, average median income of eight thousand, ninety-six dollars. And with the voucher specialty aid program, ten thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Has that housing authority, uh, talked about, um, taking that, uh, some of the housing and getting mixed income, uh, housing in those areas?
Well, we have been, um, with our building development coalition, we actually have a meeting tomorrow, where we're all coming together. Um, we have had some discussion in the housing area, in the housing solution team, we've had some discussion with the, um, public housing. So, pretty much it was a record from wrong mission, Mark, that because it's federally funded, they are not able to alter or make any changes to the public housing unless the federal government makes that decision.
Thank you.
HUD.
HUD is federal, right?
Yes, HUD, they're federally funded for HUD, directly, so they.
So you're telling me HUD makes that decision about?
That's what was communicated to us, but I will follow up on that.
I will tell you, I went to, uh, Washington DC, and I talked to a lot of those things. And they're not saying, saying that, uh, they're dictating that. Because some of the housing in other big cities, you gotta take that, uh, how, uh, uh, public housing got taken out. And put in mixed, mixed income, uh, structure.
Yes, I will follow up on that. Um, I am going to skip to, page fifty. And that is basically, um, a survey of our housing units of seven thousand, one hundred and eighty-two at a hundred percent. Uh, five thousand, one hundred and seven, seventy-one percent of the unit, the tax structure. One unit, a tax structure of sixty-one. Two to four units of eight hundred and fourteen. And five unit teams of seven hundred and sixty-eight, twenty or more, three hundred and forty-one. Uh, mobile room, mobile RV, and van, ninety-one, one percent. I'm gonna skip over into our actual annual. We do have some fairytale marketing stuff, but I'm gonna, I just wanna, I think the highlights, so we don't miss that. If you skip over to page eighty-nine, in November, I came before the commission with our community assessment that was lifted in November, we received four hundred and forty surveys within the community. Page eighty-nine, through, uh, one of two actually gives our breakdown of our priorities listed from high to strictly low. So over the course of the next five years, the city of Brunswick will be pulling from those, um, activities to address in over the course of the next five years. Um, if you will skip with me to page one fourteen, we're actually in the annual action plan, which is the last portion. And I will just address the actual goals that we've identified towards the two thousand fifteen program year. And of course, check, um, one would be our administration, which is the overall management of the inside of the frame. And as far as the plan, monitor, administer all the programs, um, to ensure compliance, the regulation. Uh, goal two would address our fair housing, as we have just conducted, while we come before the commission, um, it was the twentieth, with our announcement of the competitive initiative complete as well, which will be submitted along with our conflict here. And that is for us to address and then to, um, identify our impediments within the community as it relates to housing. Our goal number three is our fourth quarter housing category, and that, that also addresses our housing rehabilitation programs. The funding has been budgeted out. Also, and four is our park and recreational facilities. That is, uh, we're doing fifty thousand matched with our squash funds for our parks to address our parks that we need. Um, we have five identified parks that we are gonna address with that are in the worst, um, shape where we're, we're in the, the need, I should say. Um, and then also for the north five is for our park and recreational trails, which twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-six dollars will be allocated to complete, um, the leadership trail from Fourth Avenue to the dog park, everybody gone, I mean, because our, uh, everybody gone. But, um, we are, we have allocated twenty-eight thousand dollars to complete that project in this two thousand fifteen year. For our social services, um, our senior services, our Roosevelt Carrot Center, we're allocated five thousand dollars for the socialization, recreational activities for our citizens. And goal number seven is for our youth services, for the Roosevelt Monastir, H Street, for our summer camp programs, allocation of now twenty thousand dollars. And then our objective nine is for our food voucher program for postal areas, community action authority, we're allocated five thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. And that includes the competition.
And you put that up pretty good there, uh. All right, any questions?
I can, uh, I can, I can, I can, I can.
I just wanna say, I think it's all part of your, your heart's in it and, um, I know, I just know I have a little dreams.
Yeah, I got one question, uh, certainly, how, seeing that, uh, that our rate is, that, uh, rehabilitation, uh, houses, uh, needed for a kitchen?
Yes.
And for, I can't remember all of it, I'm, uh.
Most of the issues that we have in the community, um, when there are lack of maintenance in the homes, it creates other issues. And the reason that plumbing is one of the main issues, because when you have plumbing issues that go under tech or not managed, then you have issues with terrains. And then that goes in structure of the actual apartment.
And that, the question is, I know we do both liberalization or what was it, the homes, but that's, that's something that's big that we're doing, we're able to take the homes. Are we taking into consideration that this, we should be folks on these things now, or?
We, a lot of the projects that we do, majority in the rehabilitation world, if there's a roof that's leaking in a home, it's always proper to address that roof. If you address the interior of the home and the roof is leaking, you're really pretty much destroying everything invested inside the house. So we normally start with the roofing system and then move into the interior of the home. And plumbing is the first system that we need to address.
We can get some jobs over there, so it's, yes.
Yes, and as you see, there is a huge need of housing, I mean, up to this day, we've addressed the close to five hundred apartments. Um, I'm looking at the income rate. Yes, that is the, uh, these needs income from going to this fifty-five thousand. I'm not sure where that never came from, but that is the two thousand fifteen need income, fifty-five, four hundred. But that is also, again, taken into account in accounting. So that's one of the, uh, spending in Brunswick in the face, because it's accounting, you just take it into consideration. But most of the applicants that come for our office, their incomes, I've seen eight thousand, I've seen ten thousand, I've seen fifteen thousand.
All right, uh, commissioners, um, we've heard this report from, uh, Mr. Walker, uh, what's your ruling there?
I made a motion that we accept the presentation of the City of Brunswick, Georgia, two thousand fifteen through two thousand nineteen, consolidated twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen annual plan. Second.
By my motion, second, for consideration approval of the submitted two thousand fifteen, two thousand nineteen, for all their demand, two thousand fifteen, annual action plan. Are there any further discussion? If there being, uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries, now, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Can I also add our, um, allocation amounts, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and nineteen?
Are you telling us that?
Yes, that's allocation amount.
How much?
Three hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars.
That's how much we have to work with?
That's the allocation amount for two thousand fifteen.
And that, and that, that, uh, what?
I'm sorry.
That's down for what?
Uh, we, it was a decrease of ten thousand dollars, um, which is our first decrease in three years. So I guess it was just our turn. We didn't, the past few years, we've been getting increases, but this year was our first decrease, and that's just across the board. I, I'll take it ten thousand, so now it's a five hundred thousand up.
Okay, thank you, uh, Walker. Um, by long, number eight, uh, foreman, foreman, commissioner, board foreman, uh, Ms. Atkins?
Yes, um, Mayor Commissioner, um, we have two openings of audit committee, um, three proposed services waiting for, they don't advertise, and, um, candidates are in the line.
Okay, I see, uh, for, uh, the audit committee, we have two foremen, we only have one individual, two foremen for. uh, expired term, uh, Thomas Tubbs, uh, Greeney. Uh, we have one individual who has, uh, made, uh, petition to, uh, settle on that board, consideration appointment for that board. Uh, what's your ruling, Commissioner?
Mayor, I have a motion that we accept this Karen Polite, uh, from the audit committee, to place in the other, Thomas Tubbs.
Second.
My motion second, uh, that we, for the consideration appointment of Mr. Karen Polite for the audit commission to fill the expired term of Mr. Thomas Tubbs. Are there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. I think that motion carries, I see Mr. Polite is in the building, so thank you for your willingness to serve. And also, uh, Ms. City Clerk, will you please re-advertize for that?
Absolutely.
Uh, position, thank you. Brother's third preservation board has three appointments, for appointment to Brother's third preservation board to fill the unexpired and expired term of Mr. Tony Devers. Uh, that's, he has, I believe, is stepping down. And also, um, Dr. Rosemary, sorry, Cassian's, uh, her term expires, uh, uh, June thirtieth. And Mr. Guy, Neil Johnson, his term expires, uh, this, this guy, let me mention the guys. Guy Neil, no, Mr. Guy Neil Johnson, I'm sorry, I hope he's not here, are you here?
That's period. I want to chat. Please, I'm talking to him.
Um, her term expires, um, June thirtieth, uh, this year as well. And we have for, uh, consideration, uh, we have Ms. Kate Saye.
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 Saye. Right, okay. Uh, we have Ms. Jan Britton, right, Britton? And we have also Ms. Dr. Cassian, Rosemary Cassian, this, all right, so we have three openings, and we have three, uh, points. Now, one appointment seems to be for an expired term, so what's your ruling, Commissioner, for that, uh, person, then we do the, too?
Jason, this is what?
No, it's not really yet, it's just how you all, I don't know, it's not really.
What's their term, is it three years?
It is.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, one of you will have, uh, two years, or have, have two, I think, or have two, yes, I don't know.
Is, is Ms. Britton here?
Saye.
Saye?
Saye.
Since this, uh, this man is a sir, why don't we nominate her for coming ever, like, expired term?
Please, I'll re-appoint it, so I'll try to stop in June, so she will be coming.
I'd caution for, um, Jan Britton to go, yes, expire term of Tommy Evers, Kate Saye, and Rosemary Cassian to come on as full partner.
Second. My motion second, that, uh, Ms. Britton will fill the, a nominee for Tommy Evers' unexpired term, and, um, Sergeant Cassian and Ms. Johnson, uh, to, no, say, 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 sorry, say.
I'll give it right up.
Say, 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 say.
Saye.
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 To, uh, fill the terms expiring, uh, on six thirtieth. Are there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Okay, my motion carries.
Thank you so much, Britton, thanks so much for saying, for wanting to serve, thank you so very much.
All right, we are now now to Commissioner Williams, item discussion of enterprise loan application.
Mr. Mayor of the Commission, uh, sometime ago, we organized and implemented enterprise loan, in the city of Long Island, wanted to follow up and see if we, uh, completed the applica-, uh, done the diligence as far as application process, policy procedure, uh, if a citizen or a business, who is proceeding today, whether they need an application, what would that process be? How is it presented to the commission for approval or disapproval, what application may be? So I guess, uh, my question would have to go against the staff and ask them kind of where we at in that process.
Okay, can I get staff to come up and please give us a brief on that, please?
Sure thing. So we have an application put together, um, only had one person request an application, so far it's submitted. And as I mentioned, the email was completely my fault, I'm sitting on my desk, I'm pretty certain that really did get there. Um, but the application, sooner they come to the application for me, I think you may have one that's willing to, I think they have five or three names still. They fill it out, submit it, and we email it to you. Uh, the way it's set up is, they fill out the application, you review it, you determine how much impact they're gonna have, and out of what pot, to really to pay the state, um, gross, um, fees that you can pay, and or return to them, or tax, uh, property tax, uh, for taking your period of pay. So it really gets off to you, the way it's set up, that every single one of those resolutions says that the city commission shall decide what to grant. So it's, application comes in, and we give it to you.
So, so, on the application, I don't remember seeing it, this one, I think, I'm here, so I'll look it up. On the application, sir, is, is, is there a section that, that they specifically asked for what they want consideration for?
There's a lot of stuff, but, um, I said there is a section.
Okay, if not, it should be?
The other one, it, it said, it checked off fees, um, but it didn't actually put the amount of the fees, uh, but there is a section for that.
So we, if, if, if it's not, we need to make sure that it is, so that we get, we'll, we'll PM it specifically on what they want consideration for, and if they won't consider it for something, that they ought to submit an application, and that application will be specifically geared towards that consideration, and we can't come back in and say, well, I did want this, you know, and this is what you asked for, this is what we want.
I didn't break out from the, uh, credit service.
I can, I, 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 it's a thorough application. Does it say on there too, that they have to have a bottom receipt for, in order to be reimbursed for an A, so?
No. You're supposed to do this beforehand, but this is a particular case of a business that we're talking about. They were actually already in process of putting in their group, was putting in, they continue their bill, or incentive, or something along those things, prior to us adopting, um, enterprise loan. So that particular loan was just going in after the fact.
Do, are we, um, advertising this, is this posted on our website?
Is that posted on our website?
Yes.
So we haven't had any other application?
None, you mean, consideration requests, an application that hasn't been called?
Are they, are we providing information at the time that people are in business license, or interfacing with you to any degree, are we?
Well, Matt, you're certainly, certainly letting them know that not through business license, I don't believe, they're not, they're folks in city hall, they're doesn't sure if that they not believe, or where, or they not possible.
And that's what, that's, that's where the education piece needs to come in, that, so that, so when they're, they're submitting it, or ideally need to be on that application, what the expected, um, criteria is, you must provide a receipt, you must give it, you must give that, so that we won't come back to this point, um, and it's still, I don't know, you know, that, that, that's where the education piece is so.
It's pretty thorough for what you should, uh, because you have to provide, um, proof that you're at a positive impact, and how you're making investments, five jobs, or the significant investments, with all that in terms of, and not the receipt, because it's not mentally an active fact that.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't the fact that, and I, I would think that, you know, a person is going in business, and they're gonna do legitimate business in the city, and is going downtown, or wherever they're in business, that's an enterprise loan, that, I think, you know, we should look those fees off ourselves, because if I come to you receipt, you know, because I, I've heard, you know, different things, you know, okay, we could, we'll pay for, I think, a dollar, or something else, or pay for paying, or improvements, and all those things.
We, there's not a flat, if you start a business in the city, there's not a flat fee, in other words, seven permits, definitely seven, each seven permits, roughly thirty-five dollars. Each, each business will have a different number of seven's. Building permits are based on the amount of improvement that, in most cases, so each one's gonna be different, so there's, there's not a flat fee, there's a like, but, but there's not a flat fee that would say, if you start a business in the city, it's gonna be business, or you're gonna have to get that remade, or, or taken off the top.
But we, but we, but we, and, and I, I guess I'm trying to, um, Commissioner Martin said, we need to, we need to make sure, we get down, we need to get some people down here.
So it is to put a loan in for an extra person, we know, you're not always here, we need an extra person to put that amount of development position, wherever it ends up, that will be a primary focus for that. Do exactly.
I agree. That, that, that's basically all I have to say. Okay, well, the question to you, uh, there are new businesses that downtown, uh, I'll talk back, uh, to make a little, my question is, about, the restaurant started, uh, a little before we decided to enter the fire zone, do they have our licenses come in for that?
I'll tell you, if, if that is in your direction, or turn the application for that, then they want to come in and get remades on whatever they pay, and they haven't responded again, but if they do respond, it will be sent to you, and it's up to you, how far back you want to go.
Okay.
If there aren't, if nothing in the resolution that you approved, and said, you came a little back, you told you to back so far, so that we can tell you, you know.
All right. We, we got the, right?
Yeah, you know, we don't wanna be.
I'm talking to the citizens, starting, I think, talking about.
The term, the term.
Maybe, yeah, I don't know, I think they feel good, I don't think they're deeply not, or have, uh, period.
Okay, thank you, sir, really appreciate it, very much. Thank you, Walker, Mr. Lee, uh, moving on, Commissioner, uh, you know, uh, item number eleven.
Oh, I don't think we really, uh, that's in February, to be specific, and February twenty-sixth, we have meeting in our, um, park. Play a little sound, ladies, for that meeting, I've worked with our council city manager a long time, he can be staffed, and he gets, uh, our people to get some business owners, and interested citizens to adopt Highway seventeen. We now have a major minority, and I want to say thanks for that, at least we're moving forward, we're doing something. But we really need to involve people in this community, down at Highway seventeen, and I think, we need to give them opportunities. We need to lay the groundwork for the people that are out there, and, and the people that are, that, like Mr. Harris said, that there are new jobs in this city. Uh, there's employment opportunities all over the place out there. A, a planner is not going to give us the jobs that we want, what's gonna give us the jobs that we want, is get the people, like Mr. Boone here at Boss out there, and, and, and other folks that have come before us. I respectfully want to request, again, that we get these teams, uh, we get them going, with passion committed to help us get Clint Avenue, Highway seventeen, uh, who knows what else it could be called, and get this thing started out there, and, uh, and get some input to what's needed tonight. We have a property owner come before us, and we have to defer his business, this is not good, it is simply not good. This probably just gonna press April and March, April, May, you know, we're gonna meet, uh, so here we are, deferring, deferring business, so. Uh, hopefully, we can, we can come together and, and, and get our path to, to, to get something going for this important part of, and that's all my request this year for us.
Thank you, Commissioners, any, uh, any comment, fellow Commissions? There being none, okay, item number twelve.
I just wanted to let everybody know that, uh, the new city manager applications are being, uh, reviewed, and, uh, I think we had forty-five, or is that correct, forty-five? And we had one, one, two, four, we lost, so we wound up with forty-four, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I didn't want to update, because on that process, I haven't seen over twenty-five after, or what? But we do have an indoor city manager here, we've got human resources department, that should be in, really involved in this process, in my opinion. And, and that's all I've got for, for that item.
Any discussion on that, Commissioners? There being, uh, we will move right along to, uh, Commissioner Casey, item number thirteen, discussion of antique American frank, City of Long Island Firetruck.
Well, we do have, and, and it's important to this city, and it is important that we get it out of, uh, uh, where it is, and, and get it up, and, and get it refurbished, so we can use it in the community, and our fire chief has done a little, uh, work on it, we're nowhere close to the room we need to be. But Chief, if you come up and tell us a little bit about what you know about, you know? I think nineteen thirty-six, the Frank Pumper that came in here, are a real real far, I think, right?
No, exactly, twenty-six, February. Nineteen, uh, I think, two thousand four, I think that was, not here, February forty-seventh, it was a year, a year, a year, a big, uh, this big February, that's what I'm thinking of. We have really, with the case, it would be great, uh, here to fix that, like, uh, the head on the road, and, uh, our, our block, on the old, who, that, that, the team were, uh, very bad, and they were, you know? It would be really neat, and, uh, uh, to be able to display it down, somewhere, it was at the old fire station, or a lot, lot across the street here, was the old fire station. The only problem is, to refurb that, like, process I have, and it's to get it done right, uh, going through, get it running good, with like, different brand, we, about a hundred, two thousand dollars. I, uh, I don't know, I'd raise that kind of money, I know the city, we need new fire trucks right now, we need a little, a little, and, and you've talked about three hundred thousand dollars, and we're in pretty rough shape with new trucks. Uh, I know we can get, the fire truck, can't take on any more deep problems right now, we can do a little bit for it, but, uh, and our, our can recycle, and it's gonna go for a fire for, this is, a lot of eight thousand dollars. Uh, but I agree with Mr. Casey, that it would be fantastic to, 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 to put a plan together, to, you know, maybe get tires first, and, and we've gotta get a building, and somewhere to store it, and, so, that sort of, our, the old fire station, sales greeters, it's going down here, which we're seeing. Uh, but I agree with Mr. Casey that it would be fantastic to, 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 to put a plan together, to, you know, maybe get tires first, and, and we've got to get a building in order to store it, and so, that's why I started our, built our station, sales team, that's, it's going downhill, which we, you see it out there, it's going downhill pretty fast, but, I, I, I don't know, we need to get a building first, uh, price, a building with a class sign, one side, it's about forty-five thousand dollars for a building, I don't know, we would need to raise money for a building first, uh, raise money to get your tires, and get the shovel out of the public somehow, I don't, I don't have a clue first, that being people who've been came, that kind of, that kind of donation, but, that's basically what we're looking to have, to help those people, uh, like you, Ms. Martin did, uh, with the, with the players, uh, it's a lot of money.
Well, it's a handsome looking vehicle, and I, I guess you gotta couple of different considerations, wanting, like you said, uh, sort of put it in a protected area, that fire station happen to be part of the tours, but maybe not necessarily go to the full expense of rehabbing and getting the motor in for working condition, and then having to maintain that versus, um, maybe even talking to a Giga or, um, contact a school with their auto mechanic.
And by the way, you know, the, the, so, we're just, like, uh, you know, we could get maybe a job for a shop, or a worker or somebody, but that's, uh, that could get it looking, you know, it would be running, and it would be like, it was beautiful, uh, and it could be this one, and that might be, always, though, I, I don't know, you know, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't take away, not a big, I don't, I don't, take away a few years.
Well, why don't, uh, you know, faces, uh, states, uh, space, you know, uh, which one to, for sure, and the tire, and then a status plate, and try to raise funds at that way, uh, as Commissioner Martin said, uh, other organizations would be, may, maybe willing to work on it because of, uh, it just the way it is, it's historic, uh, and be involved in such a job, or such as, such as, you know, uh, other organizations, what might want to be part of, we can't display it, you know, you say, uh, it's that display, or house, and, and a place where people can always have access to, uh, and one particular thing about Barry Ross Park, but, you know, it's, I think it's too truce for kids to, to be on it, and that would mess up, I think, and, and decided to liability issues, and get hurt, so I miss some parts that are, are not charged with, I'm saying.
Lady, Commissioner Casey, would you feel wanted to do some initial, uh, work on?
I'd be more than happy to, and I would also like to request, Chief, to find out how many in Jordan did they replace that one, and we've discussed it, and, uh, I think that would be a next party for what we see, it's there's.
They want to take this alley, did, how they did their, uh, you look into any of that?
There's been a number of, uh, fire calls, probably.
But the one I see, was just another one.
Yeah, is that one, uh, they?
That was just a beginning, but, we're out.
Yeah, it, it, it took a very little money to get it to be further, uh, you know, it was probably the shake outs, it was.
I thought they said a hundred thousand dollars in the article.
No, no, uh, uh, it did take you a little, it's, or about a, uh, they have, some parks, and I refer, you know, for small rags here and there, and I, 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 uh, I'm a fire chief, uh, I'm going to raise, we, uh, um, we've, uh, we've got a project office in the, in the, our own location, can't think of as good enough, it gives us a little bit of money towards that, to, to reset off, you know, that.
Well, we need to have staff help you, uh, raise this money, maybe, you know, uh, without expertise to do that, uh, uh, we can advertise it, but it's a big, uh, job.
So, is, 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 is it something that we used at one time or something?
It was a pumper, uh, a, a pumper here in the city, well, not using six, it's a big pumper, uh, for like, please, and, uh, it's a big piece of history, I think, uh, I, I don't know if we want to get it completely refurbished, or, or, I don't, I don't just get it looking at this level, but compared to the, the, uh, one thing that concerns me, would get it completely refurbished, uh, but, that is, it's an old American frank city, that's not for, to show, like, and, uh, uh, talk to some of the old car folks around, and, and there's another guy out here that really worked on that, like, so, we, we wanted to use it in a program, that would be, uh, not, not start that day, or something, you know.
If you put it down, that's like.
But, uh, but it, it's probably cool, boy, it takes a long time, and, uh, you know.
I, I have a suggestion, um, we had a person to come in before us at the last meeting, I believe, and we, we granted him, uh, something, uh, he's going, the property that he's going to be doing right over here, he's an antique person, call him, get him fifty thousand, you know, he's telling her, he says, your first project.
It sounds like, uh, you need fifty-two from the, three thousand dollars, uh, that's a lot.
He, he's, he's building, he's gonna build something right over here, let's, let's take the truck to him, and, and say, here you go, he has a personal, I just, kind of.
Yes, I think, okay, well, I'll tell you what we want to do, let's, let's, uh.
He's an antique person.
Yeah, yeah, he's an antique, yeah.
He's an antique.
Yeah.
Commissioner Casey, will you, uh, give us any business, uh, I would, I would, I would, you have to be a salesman, so, uh, give me a good, good, uh, you. Thank you, sir, uh, thank you for putting that plug in for us, okay? That's, that's, okay, all right, um, Commissioner Casey, please, your, your item?
I don't know.
Yes, sir, uh, item number. Sorry, I'm kidding.
The, uh, Commissioner, uh, for you have opened, uh, amendment for the city, that is, or order ten forty-one, uh, this came before your April fifteenth meeting, uh, has been advertised now, in addition to that, it's also submitted, uh, along with the resolution of this past day, the fifteenth meeting, the minutes of the meeting, and they have published it out, and it's shown, uh, advertised, submitted to G M A, for their ethics committee review, uh, it's the highest authority, so, it's all been sort of taken care of at this point, believe we've advertised and not received any public input, and, uh, before you approve.
I make a motion that we accept the adoption of ordinance ten forty-one, proposed in the code of ordinance provided in Rule chapter twenty-four, code.
Probably motion second for the approval of, uh, this order, orders ten forty-one, are there any further discussion? There being none, all those papers please raise your right hand. Now, motion carries, Nancy, we have come to the end of our regular committee meeting, are there any need for a session? For, uh, communication and also personnel. Second. Uh, we motion second, we retire to take a session for, uh, personnel and dedication, and we will return, ready for our votes getting in, and after we will, uh, sure.